Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How's everyone this evening?
Good.
Good. I would like to call the Peoria Public Schools Board of Education meeting for February 21st, 2017 to order. Would you please call the roll?
Dr. Davidson and Villas. Mr. Sierra.
Here.
Mr. Adler.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Walter.
Here.
Mrs. Paston.
Here.
Mrs. Jackson.
Here.
Mrs. Ross.
Here. Thank you. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Why don't you sit? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Man. It wasn't worth sitting through that very good. It wasn't a silent protest, really.
I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes from February 6th, 2017.
So moved.
Dr. Davidson and Villas.
Mr. Adler.
Aye.
Mr. Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Walter.
Aye.
Mrs. Paston.
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Ross.
Aye.
Yes, I have a motion here.
Thank you. Tonight's Community Contribution Award is presented to people with unlimited potential, better known as PUP, P-U-P. And PUP was founded in April 2013 to help fill a gap in special needs community. PUP provides a monthly social activity that has started a school known as Continuing Education Institute to provide post-secondary opportunities. PUP is powered entirely by volunteers, and some of those volunteers that were instrumental in forming PUP are here with us this evening. We would like to ask and welcome Rich Noor, did I say that correct, Rich?
Yes.
To accept the award and tell us a little bit more about PUP. Would you come to the podium?
Excuse me. Thank you very much for having us to the board meeting tonight, now that we've found where we're supposed to be.
You feel free to move that mic.
Move that a little bit.
Thank you.
As you've already said, PUP was founded in April of 2013, and there's a group of us parents that are originally from Jamison School that felt that there was an opportunity to fill a need after our special needs students graduated from Jamison in District 150. So we got together and we formed a group called PUP, People with Unlimited Potential. We have a social event that meets once a month. All of our activities are meeting now at Living Waters Church on Knoxville. Our social event is usually the second Friday of the month. We have varied activities. We have dances, we have games, we have paper crafts, artwork, and different things like that. We try to vary it. Some of our people that we serve do not appreciate loud music, and others find that quite stimulating. So we provide a variety so that everybody's needs are met. We also collaborate with outside groups, in that we meet at Big Sky once a year in June, and we also meet at Blue Ridge Community Farm in the month of September for a weenie roast and a square dance. The other thing that we've started is we meet two days a week on Monday and Wednesday, what we call Continuing Educational Institute, and we offer a wide range of activities for two days a week for the, we call them kids, but they're young adults with special needs. I'd like to recognize the other folks that were instrumental. They're not all here tonight, but most of them are. I'm going to ask them to stand. There's Barb and Mike Fahill up over here, Sandy and Dani Eberle, Diane Perry and their husband, and Lester and Peggy Peoples, and they have their daughter Leslie with them that's part of our group. So at this time, I'm going to ask Diane, you guys can sit down, going to ask Diane to come to the podium, now that we know where it is, and she's going to, she's going to tell you a little bit about what our school does.
Good evening, I'm Diane Perry. We appreciate the opportunity to tell you about PUP CEI. The program started in June 2014. It is a program for individuals with special needs who have graduated from high school. Most of our individuals are graduates of Peoria Public Schools. The goals of our program are simple: to provide a safe environment for our young adults to gather with peers, to offer a wide variety of structured activities, and to have fun. We meet on Mondays and Wednesdays at Living Waters Church, as Rich said. Participants pay $10 per day. We break for major holidays in the month of July. I, along with Sandy Eberle, have the honor and privilege to lead and guide an amazing group of 15-year-olds with special abilities and talents. Our group has full spectrum of ability levels. Our participants range in age from 21 to 37. The program would not be possible without our awesome team of dedicated volunteers. Some of us are parents and grandparents of participants, some are retired teachers, and others are friends of friends who have learned of our program and have an interest in interacting with our population. At this time, our greatest need is to bring in board more volunteers. We begin our day with announcements, calendar, weather, current events, local and national. We carefully guide them through the Peoria Journal Star while focusing on interesting but positive articles. One of my favorite segments each morning is a time when each participant is given an opportunity to share something that's happening in their lives. We want them to know that we are interested and that we care about them. The group participates in a wide variety of arts and craft projects, painting is a favorite, and life and social skills activities. Some enjoy puzzles, others play games. Some of our young adults enjoy music and dance activity in the afternoon. Once a month, a retired teacher from Jamison School comes to teach sign language. Also, once a month, students from the Life Skills Class at Peoria Heights High School join us. Mondays are brunch lunch day. Wednesdays are cooking days. The group helps plan the menu for the week. We have three teams that rotate each week to help prepare the meal. As you might imagine, our young people love to eat, and we do feed them very well. We are not just an in-house program, however. We love to go out in the community. Some of the highlights are bowling, a movie, eating out. We've played miniature golf, visited the animals at the Peoria Zoo, walked the trails at Forest Park Nature Center, enjoyed the exhibits at Caterpillar Visitor Center and Rosa Time Museum, painted pottery at Fired Up, and admired artists' creations while walking the Sculpture Walk downtown Peoria. And what would fall be without a trip to Tanner's Orchard? And of course, those awesome apple cider donuts. During the summer, our group enjoys fishing at Hooked on Fishing. One of our favorite places to visit is the Blue Ridge Community Farm in Chillicothe. Our young adults enjoy interacting and feeding the animals. This year, we hope to have a more hands-on involvement with activities at the farm. Last but not least, we do service at Living Waters Church. By vacuuming and dusting the sanctuary, cleaning the kitchen, and our classroom, we also serve once a month at Midwest Food Bank. Typically, we bag granola bars or label cans of peas. Our individuals are focused and work very hard during this activity. As a group, we are very productive. At the end of the two hours, we are all tired, too tired to cook, so we bring in pizza on those days for lunch. Each of our young adults is unique, each has challenges, but more importantly, they all have strengths. We are proud of these individuals as we have seen personal growth in each of them, as they have come together as a community of friends. In a nutshell, that's PUP CEI, a program that is one of those quiet little gems in the city of Peoria. Would you like to be a volunteer? Come, enjoy the fun.
Thank you.
Friends, this is very nice, and that's why you're being recognized this evening. We wanted to show you some love and appreciation for all that you do, very, very quietly. This is an area that we, I personally, as the president of Peoria Public Schools, I'm learning more and more about love and compassion. A belief of our district is that with the right supports and attention, everyone can learn and make improvement, and you exemplify that, so thank you so much. We have a small token of appreciation, and actually, I'd like more in. I know you wanted to make some remarks, so Rich, you're amazing. We love the team, and thank you for what you're doing for the young people of Peoria.
So why don't you make some remarks?
You're welcome.
Thanks for meeting you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
So I would just like to say thank you on behalf of Peoria Public Schools. These parents and community members make the lives of our students, especially those who graduate from Jamison, just remarkable. They have a place that's safe and fun and enjoyable for them to go, and we really need this in our community for our students that have developmental disabilities or intellectual disabilities. We need to give them those experiences, so thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Excuse me. Rich, Rich, did you bring some participants with you tonight? Do you have any other volunteers or board members?
Ms. Leslie Peoples is here.
Thank you. Let's do the Adopted School Partnership first, Ms. Oakford.
Thank you. I am Sarah Oakford. I'm the Adopted School Coordinator for Peoria Public Schools, and I just wanted to share a little bit about, the Adopted School Program brings businesses and organizations and community groups together with schools in a collaborative effort that enriches student learning. Through tutoring, mentoring, in-kind or financial contributions, and a connection with strong positive role models, the students of Peoria Public Schools benefit from a broad spectrum of knowledge and resources. Volunteers come from large companies and small, from churches and organizations, from all walks of life. Their personal touch, enthusiasm, and dedication are of immeasurable value to the children of Peoria. Currently, we have 56 active partners, with 30, and an additional, who are also active, 35 new partners this year. So I wanted to recognize a few of those partners tonight. First, from Lincoln School, Principal Tom Blumer with Richwoods Christian Church, if they could come up. Their partnership is going to begin shortly with mentoring of fourth-grade students who are struggling in various subjects. And this is one of the ways that Richwoods Church has chosen to reach out in the communities to serve those in need. So I just wanted to thank you, and we look for great things to come for this partnership. And the next one is Valeska Hinton with Principal Katie Powers with the Church Women United. And I really didn't have much to do with this at all. The Church Women United voted to take on a non-for-profit, and Valeska Hinton was what they chose to do. And what they're doing there is they're providing a presence at their parent and group events. They read for guest reader days, they provide refreshments for additional parent events, and support the snack pack program in coordination with Glen Oak Christian School, which I believe they do pack about 300 or so for Valeska every week, and 900 for Glen Oak Christians Learning Center. Yes. Thank you very much. The next trio, Franklin, Principal Dr. Ann Bond is doing a fabulous job, and I think it's a testament to the kids and the teachers there that we have a lot of people who like to help Franklin. First of all, we have federal companies. They have been working with the third graders with their reading buddies, and they've been doing this for six years. This is their sixth year with the reading buddies, which is their grade readers. Thank you very much. And I think this might be one of the readers.
Yep, she's one of them.
And next, we have, and you can just stay up here, we have St. Paul's Episcopal Church, and they have been, they've been around for a while, but we're kind of revitalizing that partnership. They also do the reading buddies with third graders. They have someone who comes in and just has lunch with the kids. They donate school supplies. I know they just did, they did some at the beginning of the year, but they've also done some recently, I think two Fridays ago, it was in remarkable times. So just want to thank St. Paul's for being involved in Franklin. Oh, there she is. There she is. There's St. Paul's.
Oh, come here. Here, let everybody see you.
The next one is the Peoria Chiefs. The Peoria Chiefs, I think, are also doing the reading buddies for third graders. This is their second year of doing reading buddies, and I think they brought someone who the kids really, really like to see.
Oh, wow.
So, as you can tell, this is a big group of volunteers for Franklin, and we really appreciate it.
So we need a chief here.
I don't need to be a chief. And those are the new adopters, so thank you very much for having us.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make any comments? No?
Board President Ross, does that mean for me too?
Yes.
I just want to say thank you, because we have a huge community, just have a lot of community support at Franklin, and we really couldn't do what we do every day without them. And so I really, truly appreciate them, and I'm glad we got to acknowledge them in front of all of you. So thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. And thanks to all the volunteers that participated. I want to tell you, I want to tell you, those snack packs are really good on Fridays. I don't know where you all get all that good stuff from, but it's really good. I'm going to go out that door.
Yeah, they want to take pictures.
Oh, okay. The next on the agenda is Most Improved Attendance, Dr. Karan.
Thank you, President Ross. We continue to remind students and families of the importance of attending school every day and how important improving attendance is, and actually, we have three schools that we would like to recognize. They have done a really nice job when it comes to improving their attendance this January versus last. For example, Chatter Oak is, is Betty Zilkowski, is Mrs. Zilkowski here this evening? Ms. Z. Amazing, Chatter Oak improved their attendance going from 94% last year, January 16, to 96% January 2017. So you had a 1.71% gain, which is really amazing, almost 2%. That is, that took a lot of hard work and effort. So can you tell us a little bit about what you did to get what you have currently? What's your team doing regarding attendance and attendance initiatives?
I would say probably the most important thing we do is we reach out to parents, contacting them, letting them know that if there's any needs they have, we can help them. If the kids miss the bus, give us a call, we'll get them in. Some of our older children, we've given them actually alarm clocks so they can get themselves up, and they're thrilled to be doing that. So we just work with the children, with the families, and that's all.
Beautiful, Ms. Z. And Mrs. Zilkowski is the principal of Chatter Oak. Please remain standing, I have something for you that you can share with your kids and families and staff. And then, actually Roosevelt also did a really nice job. They came in second regarding improved attendance. They went from 90% in January 2016 to 91.9% this past January. Do you have any representation from Roosevelt, Mrs. Clark, or any of the assistant principals? And then our third school, Lincoln, I know Mr. Blumer is here with the Adopted School. Oh, are you here to, perfect. So you guys came in third, awesome. We recognize the top three. And so Lincoln K8 rose from 90% last year to 91.5% January 2017. So you had a gain of 1.28. Congratulations. And please share with the board and the public, our friends, what are some of the strategies that are being used to continue to improve attendance?
We've had quite a few incentives that we have advanced. We have weekly drawings, trying to encourage children to be to school every day on time. That if they have made it all five days of the week on time every day, their name goes into a drawing, and they are pumped up to hear their names announced at the end of the week, every week. We've also done quarterly drawings for bigger prizes for those who have made it the entire grading period every day on time. For nine weeks is not easy, but we're going for it. But then also, we have tried a few other ones, just trying to get the attendance there, even if some of our babies can't necessarily get there on time, be it weather or oversleeping. At least if they're making the effort to get to school every day, that they're getting an additional incentive, and we do those periodically. Even with a prize as simple as a free dress day to get out of uniform is a big incentive for them.
So thank you so much. And you're working very, very hard. So thanks for sharing some of the strategies, appreciate it. Thanks for all of the work that you're doing at Lincoln. And Chatter Oak receives the banner that you give him.
Thank you.
In a visible location. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Student Recognition.
In November and December, the Peoria Public Schools donated over 300 food baskets to Peoria families for Thanksgiving and Christmas. A group of students from Manuel Academy, Peoria High School, and Von Steuben Middle School were instrumental in helping sort, package, and decorate these boxes before they were delivered. We want to recognize these hard-working students tonight and their roles in bringing holiday cheer to some Peoria families. Please join me in recognizing the following students, and please forgive me if I mispronounce your name, I'm really bad with names. Oh, yes. So first, from Manuel Academy, if we can have their teacher, Kim Grimes.
I'm going to announce my students' names who participated. Evan Johnson, Robert Williams, Demaniel Pride, Jasmine Hopkins, William Boyd, Ethan Ewing, Chauncey Fortune, Kyrell Johnson, Lexus Smith, Jasmine Sharp, Isaiah Hooligan, Rashawn Upchurch, and Xavier Jackson. Thank you very much.
Okay, and now if we can have the teacher from Peoria High, Rachel Getz.
Representing Peoria High would be Cheyenne Legg, Ronthez Sims, Elijah Flora, Joyce Jefferson, Starr Hurstein, Nikia Hardeman Cotton, Thomas Carter, Caitlin Graff, Denisea Morgan, Anna Welsh, Victoria Smith, Maya Womack, McKenna Alexander, and Phelan Stokes.
And finally, if we can have the teacher representative, Karen Loon, from Von Steuben Middle School.
And Ms. Thompson is here representing.
Oh, and Ms. Thompson is here representing Von Steuben Middle School.
Unfortunately, none of my kids could make it tonight, but representing Von Steuben, we have Caitlin Booker, Mason Palsgrove, Trenton Stokes, Gage Powers, Joey Corey, Demarius Morrison, Dani Trich, Denaya Mack, Tyler Neal, Alicia Williams, Latrina Redman, Zaven, and Zaven Tooney.
Once a year since 2004, magical and touching celebration of the human spirit unfolds at East, oh, East Light Theater in East Peoria, Illinois. A group of children in a program called The Penguin Project take to stage to perform a modified version of a well-known Broadway musical. This production is unique, however, because of all of its roles are filled by children with developmental disabilities, including Down Syndrome, cerebral palsy, autism, intellectual disabilities, learning disabilities, visual impairment, hearing impairments, and other neurological disorders. impairments, and other neurological disorders, they are joined onstage by their peer mentors, a group of children the same age without disabilities, who have volunteered to work with them side by side and guide them through four months of rehearsals and the final production. By creating unrestricted access to the performing arts, The Penguin Project demonstrates that these special challenges of a disability need not handicap a child's ability to participate in life's experiences. Tonight, we recognize the Peoria Public Schools students who participated in the Penguin Project 2017 production, Crazy for You, Young Performers Edition. But first, I would like to ask Dr. Andrew Morgan and Kathy Morgan to join us at the podium and tell us about The Penguin Project.
I'm going to turn the mic over to my wife and let her do this.
I don't speak.
Yeah. Quite the contrary, she does speak. She just doesn't speak in front of a microphone in public. Well, I had no idea that I was going to be asked to speak tonight. I'm going to be very brief. The program is basically a program that gives kids with special needs and disabilities a chance to perform theater. I've been involved in theater since I was young and recognize that theater has a way of improving self-esteem, communication skills, and socialization. We've seen that happen with all of the children that have participated. The most important part of the program, though, are the peer mentors, the young people who give themselves for four months to work side by side with their partners. And together, they really create friendships and social relationships. I can tell you that that's the most important part of the program, creating much-needed social networking for the kids and for their parents. There's too many stories to talk about, but I'm going to finish my comments with a quote that came from a mentor who was about 12 years old when she said this. And again, this is totally spontaneous. It was one of those things you know, at the end of shows, they always take the video camera around and say, "Say something, say something." This young lady said, "I knew when I heard about this Penguin Project that people's lives were going to be changed. I didn't know that that life was going to be mine." And that really sums up what this program is about. It's about changing lives. And the young people that are here tonight are incredible kids who have worked so hard together and really have put on tremendous shows over the years to show ability, not disability.
Please help me recognize the performers this year. Sorry, once again, if I, you know, mess up your name. First, we have Andrew Paschkert from Richwoods High School. Next, we have Caroline Ricketts from Richwoods High School as well. Daniel Van Buskirk from Richwoods High School. Darren Lee from Richwoods High School. And finally, Gabriel Hughes from Lindbergh Middle School. And then please help me welcome the peer mentors for this year's Penguin Project. Callie Salazar. Cameron Salazar. Hannah Z. I don't know you.
Hannah Zolkowski.
Oh, that explains the name.
Another performance, okay.
All right. And then can we have Jared Ledford from Richwoods High School? Madeline Battleman? And then finally, Bunny Zell.
Hey, Barb, do you have pictures? Be able to get some pictures? Let's get some nice pictures.
Great job, Alex.
Thank you. Would the parents of these students, if you're present, please stand? We recognize? Are there any teachers or administrators also? Thank you all. Great job. Thank you, Mr. Sierra.
Announcements.
Well, now at the point of announcements, are there any announcements? Mr. Shaw?
Just a reminder that the nomination window for those who excel and the Donald M. Ferris Classroom Teacher of the Year is open. Applications can be downloaded from the Peoria Public Schools website. There are seven nomination categories: administrator, classroom teacher, student support personnel, educational service personnel, community volunteer or board member, team or early career educator. Applications require several letters of recommendation and support materials. The application deadline is Friday, April 21st at 5:00 PM, which is the first Friday after returning from spring break. Start thinking now which of your colleagues and school volunteers are exemplary and deserving of recognition and begin preparing your nomination package. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wather?
A reminder that Peoria Public Schools seniors have less than one week to submit scholarship applications to the Peoria Public Schools Foundation. Applications are due on Monday, February 27th at 11:59 PM. Go to www.ppsfoundation.org for details.
Thank you. Other announcements? Mr. Sierra?
Manual Academy, Peoria High School, and Richwoods High School will each present their Black History Month program this week. On Thursday, February 23rd, from 6:00 to 7:30, Peoria High School will present the Black History Month Family Showcase. This event will include a soul food cafe, a living museum with Peoria High School students portraying famous African-Americans, and performance by the drum combo, drama and vocal students, dance team, step team, and raw talent spoken word ensemble. Manual Academy will present a March Through History on Friday, February 24th at 1:00 PM. Audience members will travel through seven centuries of African-American history illustrated by a multimedia presentation, song and dance, spoken word performances, and reenactments of famous speeches performed by Manual students. The assembly will include performances by the Manual Academy Drum Line and Manual Academy Choir Orchestra, step performances by Manual Academy Step Team, and the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Step Team. Richwoods High School will also present a two Black History Month Assembly on Friday, February 24th at 8:23 and 9:07 AM. This year's assembly has been entirely coordinated by the students in the Minority Academic Advancement Project. The assembly will include a performance, spoken word, and dance performances, a keynote speaker by Dr. Rita Alley, Vice President of Diversity International and Adult Education at Illinois Central College.
Thank you. Other announcements? Ms. Costa?
Thank you. Good evening. Peoria Public Schools and the Peoria Public Schools Board of Education would like to extend our congratulations to Elizabeth, Elizabeth Lindquist, who is one of our student board members. We'd like to congratulate her for winning the Peoria County Bar Association's Lincoln Award for her leadership, community service, and academic success. She was honored last week at the Bar Association's Annual Lincoln Banquet. Again, congratulations, Elizabeth.
Thank you. Other announcements? Okay. District presentations. We have Organ Donor Drive Christine Hickman. Ms. Hickman?
Good evening.
Good evening. Dr. Karat, President Ross, Vice President Adler, esteemed school board members, Dr. Bell, and staff and guests. My name's Christine Hickman. I'm a special ed teacher at Lindbergh Middle School, and I am chairing the first District 150 Oregon and Bone Marrow Drive. This will coincide with parent-teacher conferences to be held on Thursday, March 23rd, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. I wanted to do this to honor three very important people. Mike Plunkett received a new heart after Thanksgiving of 2016. I first met Mike when he was the assistant principal at Woodruff High School in the fall of 2006. I was a student teacher. I was one of those non-traditional college students. I was a student teacher, and I was very impressed with his easy manner and how he interacted with students and staff. I had the opportunity to work for him when I transferred to Lindbergh Middle School. My cousin is looking at her second kidney transplant within the next two years. Jenny was diagnosed with type 1 diabetes at the age of five. Organ failure is quite common with this disease. I had a student when I taught at Trewin Middle School who was unable to get a kidney before he passed away a few years ago. According to the United Network for Organ Sharing, there are more than 116,000 people on the national transplant list. Of those 116,000, there are nearly 31,000 who are African-Americans. 29% are waiting for donors, but only 16% of African-Americans will become donors, which means that many people, just like my student, will pass away waiting for a necessary organ. And I got an email this morning from someone who has worked at this district for quite a while, Laverne Wildy. Laverne's oldest daughter is currently on the transplant list for a heart. And Laverne has had to take a leave of absence because her daughter and her grandchildren now need 24-hour care. So I'm doing this for Laverne also. Hispanics, they also make up 16% of the people needing an organ, while only 13% of the population are signed up to be donors. As of January 17th of this year, from Illinois, there are 5,058 people on the waiting list. An organ from a donor of the same race increases the likelihood of a successful transplant. This is why I'm very passionate about this, because I want to raise the number of minorities who are to get them to sign up to be a donor. My student, I actually was tested for him. I am one of those teachers who believes that every student I interact with is one of my kids. Unfortunately, I was told I wasn't a match. Different races and different blood types. He spent five years on dialysis. He went to Central High School every day and spent every night for the rest of his life at a hospital getting dialysis. So I want to try and prevent any other student from having that. Mike Plunkett and Chris Copeland are working with me. Tracy Jones has also been a very valuable resource. Principals have been contacted. Roche's have been ordered. We are looking for volunteers. I have contacted Peoria City Council and will be contacting other elected officials. I am hoping those of you not directly involved with conferences will volunteer. More information will be coming via an email. Thank you to Dr. Karat for approving of my idea for this drive. She responded to my request on Christmas Day. So she is officially the hardest-working person I know. Dr. Karat, you have brought back the pride and hope for this district teacher. I will be available for questions and offers to volunteer at my District 150 email, and all of you will be receiving an email from me. Thank you for allowing me to present this evening. I'm open for any questions if you have them. Otherwise, you can email me.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Just a comment. I really appreciate you doing this. This is a very valuable service. And I think a lot of times, people just aren't aware of how to sign up or where to sign up to do that. And there was a tragedy last weekend. There was an 11-year-old girl who was shot in Chicago. And she donated eight different organs to help this. And while that was a tragedy, she gave the life to other people. And so I just want to thank you for your efforts in doing this and making us all aware. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Dr. Karat?
There's also an opportunity to donate your body to science. And I've been reading about that also, Ms. Hickman. I'm really intrigued by that idea and maybe considering that, too. Thank you.
We are now at the place on our agenda that provides an opportunity for the members of the community who wish to address the board. As you know, we are all volunteers elected by you to oversee the development, implementation, and maintenance of a quality education for the students of Peoria District 150 Schools. The board welcomes your comments and suggestions relating to this goal. Recognizing that we all have our First Amendment rights of free speech, we ask that your comments be focused on those issues within the board's authority. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific personal concern that need to be addressed, we will get a staff person to help you. In addition, board members are accessible outside of these meetings. Our phone numbers and emails are listed on the website, PSD150.org. We realize that five minutes may not be enough time for some of you to express your thoughts, so we have installed a comment box for your convenience. Our board secretary will be collecting those comments after each board meeting and compiling and sharing with the superintendent in the board. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each speaker has five minutes. No one under age 18 may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or teacher without the full consent of the majority of the board. Our first speaker this evening is Ms. Sharon Cruz.
The political climate in which we live today is not conducive to the support of public schools. Peoria Public Schools need to do everything possible to draw parents back to our schools instead of giving in to the pervasive trend that has reduced enrollment in our schools. This administration is doing a great job of presenting the good things that are happening in our schools daily. However, that's not enough. We need to provide solid proof of success by publicizing what our graduates have accomplished. The public doesn't care how many As our students earn. People want to know if the grades earned in high school have prepared students for the future. At a later date, I will share with you the data I have gleaned from about 70 Manual grads from 1969 to 2006. Obviously, my sample is not comprehensive enough. I may have to do a bit more prodding to get more results. Tonight, however, I want to talk about the six-year-olds that I met Tonight, however, I want to talk about the six-year-old that I met when her mother Karen married Jeff Atkins Dutroux. Dr. Karat, I know you remember Malia Atkins-Dsoues, little dynamo that graced the halls and classrooms at Whittier. When she was ready for middle school, Malia was not happy about her acceptance at Washington Gifted, and her quote is not fit for public consumption tonight, so. But she went and loved every minute of her time there. Then she was happily accepted into the IB program, I mean, she happily accepted, I'm sorry, into the IB program at Richwoods, where she was in the band, on the speech team, and a diver on the swim team. She could have had scholarships in any of those three activities. She chose to go to Truman State University in Kirkville, Missouri, and to accept a generous scholarship to be on the speech team. The IB program had served her well in that she graduated from college in three and a half years. In December, she graduated cum laude from Truman with a Bachelor of Science degree in Biology. Now Malia has had all-expense-paid invitations to interview at eight graduate schools to earn a PhD in genetics. She will soon finish interviewing at schools all across the country, including the University of Wisconsin, the University of Texas, Ann Aron Georgia, University of Iowa, and Washington University in St. Louis, and three others that I don't remember, and soon must decide which offer she will accept to begin school in the fall. You will see Malia's name on the list of substitutes tonight to be approved, so that she can teach for the rest of this semester. She tells me that in her four years at Richwoods, she never even saw a referral. I hope she can say the same in May. I know that district students are in for a treat. There are many stories like Malia's that need to be told. I guarantee you that her story is not done yet. Please find a way that stories from all our graduates can be used to spread news of how well our students are prepared for their futures. My own experience tells me that successful graduates do not have to be enrolled in IB or AP classes. I never taught either one of those. Imagine how much better you would all feel about your role as Board members if you were made aware of these success stories. Of course, the success of public schools is not really judged by college results either. The real test of grades at all levels of education comes when graduates achieve success in the workplace and in society. Please do more to acknowledge the accomplishments of our graduates. And Jeff did not ask me to do this. I need no prompting, but Terry Knapp did. He pressured me to say all kinds of things. Thank you.
Speaking of, Mr. Terry Knapp.
I want to echo what Sharon said about Malia. What a truly wonderful person. If you've never met her, you should. I want to comment that the gentleman spoke earlier about Peoria Public Schools changing lives. You've done a great job, Ms. Dr. Karat, of recognizing people in our school system. And I'll echo what Sharon said. We need to work on taking pride on the packages we've turned out in this district. My sons are products of this district. Both were valedictorian. My son had a 35 on his ACT at Woodruff, and he took the ACT to get a 36 and still got a 35, and never forgave me for getting a 36. Laugh out loud. Anyway, what I would like to say, thousands of people in Peoria belong to the four alumni associations, Richwoods, Manual, Central, and Woodruff. Woodruff is still alive and well. We take in thousands of dollars a year. We have $20,000 to give out this year in scholarships. Last year, we gave out six $2,000 scholarships to former Woodruff students that are still in college. One guy was 35 years old, is still going to school, and we're still helping him go to school. And I think that's important. We gave 10 $500 scholarships to Woodruff students, students that come from Richwood Central and Manual to Woodruff Vocational Center, and we gave 10 $500 there, and we gave 10 $250 scholarships, not scholarships necessarily, but for equipment like steel-toed boots for those going to work and so forth. And we're very proud of that. And the thing that I want you to know is, thousands of people that graduate from Peoria Public Schools are still involved, whether you know it or not. And it's important that you understand that and recognize that. Every year, we have, in our community, 40 people under 40 that get recognized for awards, and they have a magazine out. You've seen it before. It's got pictures and so forth of those recipients. Many of those people are proud graduates of District 150. I think it's important for you to do something in the way of marketing to put out that those people are Peoria Public Schools' products. Not just the ones that are here, but the ones that live in this community and live in other parts of the country. The people that apply for our Woodruff Alumni of the Year are, they're incredible. I mean, they're in businesses, they own businesses, they're multimillionaires. You know, they've been successful beyond the word "successful." I urge you, as with Ms. Cruz's acknowledgement of Malia, to be aware of these other people and put somebody in charge of marketing. And when people leave school, announce when they graduate from college and where they graduate from. All of them, you know, put them up here. I mean, these are wonderful things, but they all ought to have a name on them, of the people that graduated, and their parents would be very proud. They'd be more supportive of Peoria Public Schools. Thank you.
Mr. Gary Newhouse?
Since the Illinois State Funding Reform Committee issued its, or Commission issued its report in February, it appears that the ball is now in the state legislature's court to come up with a new funding formula. The current funding formulas that are used to allocate the general state aid to the school districts are all structured to funnel the greatest amount of money to the poorest districts. I wonder what specific changes would the Board or the administration like to see enacted? And are our local state legislators working with you to get your input?
Thank you. Would you, is there, we wanted to send it to you by email, or you didn't?
Well, I mean, if you have, if there's something, you know, a document or something like that that is on a website or something like that that I could look at, I'm just wondering if, you know, if there's input being solicited and if you guys have thought through this. You know, everybody knows that that's the one issue, that it seems like everybody agrees what we have now is dissatisfactory.
Right. And I think our superintendent has been working on this, so I don't know.
Can we get Mr. Newhouse's email?
Is there some, like a?
And then we'll send, we'll send the document to you. It's an evidence-based proposed formula. I'll send that to you.
All right.
Thank you. Okay. Where are we? Oh, okay. Is there any response to audience participation? Mr. Walker?
I just want to thank, thank the gentleman who just spoke for his interest in the funding. It really is critical for Peoria Public Schools for a change in the formula. This Board and the administration's done a remarkable job with a really shortage of funds. And so that changing of that formula would be probably the singlest, largest thing that could help us right now, and I appreciate your interest in bringing it up. So thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Other response?
To Mr. Knapp and his absence, I'm not sure where he went. But in regards to recognizing individuals who have been products of Peoria Public Schools that have excelled and made contributions, as he was talking, I was just thinking, it's very difficult for us to obtain that information unless somebody provides it to us. But as he was talking, I was thinking, is there something that we might be able to put out on the website that will allow the public to give us feedback in regards to those individuals?
We have Facebook now, which is where I got all my information.
I'm sorry. What did you say?
I just said Facebook.
On Facebook?
Well, our website.
Yeah, I was saying, you know, the Peoria Public Schools website. I was just thinking, if there was something that we could put out on our webpage that would allow people to respond to us, and, you know, maybe we can make it noteworthy and let people know where they are and what they're doing and the contributions that they're making. It's kind of just a thought. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. National High School Athletic Coaches under information items. Dr. Kenny?
You just can't stay away, can you, Dr. Kenny?
Before I get into the presentation, I would like to just take a second and thank Mr. Willis and Dr. Karat and Mike McKenzie, and certainly, to a great extent, Daphne Dixon and Mrs. Ross. We went through about a 10-month process, but it really kind of came to a climax last week. We, and I say we, I represent the Peoria Public Building Commission as a part-time job, but we refinanced the Glen Oak Bonds, and we were able to save $2.4 million on the interests on that bond. So it will be something that you'll be able to deal with in your levy, your lease levy over a 10-year period. So we're real happy about that process. We were not quite sure, as interest rates started to kind of climb, we weren't sure we were going to get there, but we did, and we'll close on those next week. We're real excited about saving $2.4 million for the Peoria taxpayers. All right, as I get into this presentation, it is fairly brief, but just want to talk about a couple of things that we know. When you think about coaches, and the coaches that we have, whether they're junior high or high school, they are some of the most influential people that are in our systems. They spend hundreds of hours every year with their athletes, with their teams, with their kids, and certainly have a lot of influence. And you all know stories about how somebody was moved to do something, learned discipline or whatever. Many of the great CEOs will tell you that high school sports or junior high sports were something that really helped them out. Something else that we do know is that the best programs and the best coaches are lifelong learners. And you can, you can look at many programs that continue to have success year after year, whether it's Nick Saban and Alabama Crimson Tide or any of the sports, where you see a very successful program, there are, there are coaches that really study their sport, give back to their sport, but also spend a great deal of time making changes that help them out. Sure. So, National High School Athletic Coaches Association is having their annual conference this summer in East Peoria at the Embassy Suites. This is a unique situation because this is the first time in 50 years that this conference will be held in Illinois. It was held in Chicago 50 years ago. So it really and truly is kind of a once-in-a-lifetime event. The NHSACA is made up for coaches, high school coaches, and now junior high coaches are also involved. So it is a, it is a national organization with about 40,000 members. There are four parts to the conference that's going to be here in June. There's a leadership seminar on Saturday and Sunday. Graduate credit is offered for that. A lot of that are coaches that maybe want to look into just a taste of administration, athletic directorship, those kinds of things. I have presented at it a few times, and when I talk, I talk about those guys that want to get into a principalship, because I think it's important. They've got some of the tools, and it's a good place to go. Monday through Wednesday, there will be a coaches clinic, and that's primarily why I'm here. On Tuesday at lunch, there's a National Hall of Fame, and Peoria Public Schools does have some coaches that have been put in the Hall of Fame in the past. And then Wednesday night is the National Coach of the Year Banquet. You look at the next slide, we, there are eight regions in the country. Our region is Illinois, Indiana, Michigan, Wisconsin, and Ohio. There are 19 different sports that are honored at this final banquet, National Coach of the Year banquet. Now, why that's important is you think about that. So a region for Coach of the Year in 19 different sports is going to be there, and there are eight regions. So you already have close to 150 people that are going to be honored. Not all of them will be there, but these are the best high school coaches in the country, and they're going to be here in East Peoria in June. Okay? So we are trying then locally to set up a coaches clinic. We'll have those speakers. We're going to have a few extra speakers of our own to kind of fill in, because it is a three-day conference. We're going to have athletic trainers, nutritionists, and so forth. And we're going to work with these coaches in very individual sports, their sports, again, 19 different sports, so that they can learn more strategies about how to work with the kids, how to work with parents, certainly strategies on playing the games. So we are going to have a couple of broad sessions. One is, and this was asked, requested by coaches, they'd like to know more about the scholarship process, the compliance process for NCAA. And we thought, well, that's good. So we're actually going to even extend this, not only to the coaches that participate, but if they want to bring an athlete that might be a potential scholarship winner, kids need to understand this process as well. Then we're going to have one session on working with the media. So we're very excited about it. We planned some social activities Tuesday night during this conference. Mr. Van Akken has opened up Dozer Park, and we're going to have a big cookout for the coaches there. We're very excited about that. Now, I just wanted to give you a little bit of the history. You can see there, in the Hall of Fame, Dick Van Sayak, Manuel High School Boys, was inducted into the Hall of Fame in 1997. John Gross, Richwoods Girls Basketball, 2009. Phil Salzer, Peoria High Football and Track, 2012. And actually, this June, Corky King, he was Richwoods Swimming Coach for many, many years. He did move up to the suburbs, but he's actually being inducted this spring. So it is a very special event with a lot of special people. If you want to go through the next slide real quick, there's Coach Van Sayak when he was inducted in the Hall of Fame and his lovely wife. This is a kind of an interesting picture. Third from the left is John Gross, when he was inducted into the Hall of Fame. He also actually is a National Coach of the Year. I had mentioned about the eight regions, and so there'll be eight boys' basketball, eight girls' basketball, and so forth. Then that night at the event, one of those eight is actually named National Coach of the Year, and John Gross is one of those. Now, my good friend Jerry Rashid, at the time that he was giving the award, I was still the superintendent at IVC, so I had the picture up there with both of them. And then Phil Salzer is the next picture. So as we get to my last slide, and so why am I here? One of my goals, and you just heard about, we're concerned about school finances and so forth, so I've made it my own kind of mission here. I want to raise $12,500 so that Peoria Public Schools can send 100 coaches to this conference, again, one of the best conferences in the country. So that's my goal. I raised 1,000. I don't have a lot of time left, and we want to get on this, but certainly anybody that wants to do this, very fortunately for us, Cindy Morris and the Peoria Public School Foundation is going to be the go-through agency so people can get their tax write-off and so forth. So anybody who wants to write a check, just make it out to the Foundation, send it to her, make sure you put someone on there that it's for the coaches' scholarship fund. And we'd love to see anybody participate or support us that we can. There are other things that can be done for this conference that's coming, but I, my main goal is to raise that 12,500. I've got 1,000 done and 11,500 to go. So get out your checkbooks and talk to Mrs. Morris. And I would offer, if anybody knows any agency that wants me to come talk, be happy to do it. I am scheduled for Rotary later, but I've been talking to athletic directors, meetings, and I met with about 40 superintendents last Thursday, talking about this conference. But the mission here is a little different, because I want to raise that 12,500. It'll really help out the high school. It'll really help out the high school athletic budgets. Any questions?
Anybody have a question, Dr. Kenny?
Well, Dr. Karat knows how to get ahold of me. If you have any questions later or have any suggestions or ideas, let us know. Sure appreciate being here.
Thank you, Dr. Kenny.
Thank you, Dr. Kenny.
I believe you'll accomplish your goal, Dr. Kenny. First reading of update policy six colon two eighty, grading and promotion, Policy Committee. Is there any, everyone received that? And this is just a first reading. Any questions on that reading of the policy? Dr. Karat?
Yeah, just minor, actually, a very minor adjustment. I think essentially what was switched was the removal of the phrase "I sat" to align with the new state assessment of "park." So, that's, that was the big modification regarding this revision update.
We're talking about the policy update, not the administrative update.
The grading and promotion.
Okay.
It's just a phrase that was.
Any questions on that? So, that will be coming back at a later date for, for the second, probably second and final reading. Proposed expenditures over $2,500. Any questions of Mr. Willis? Seeing none. Reported request under the Freedom of Information Act and the status of such requests. Dr. Karat?
Since our last board meeting, Madam President, on February sixth, we had three requests of these. One was filled. There were five pending requests noted on February sixth. These requests were filled. We have received thirteen requests for this calendar year at a cost of $5,760.50.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Mr. Adler?
President Ross, the consent agenda consists of thirteen items tonight. Item number one, gifts to the school district. This meeting, $4,175. A year-to-date, $183,538.13. Item number two, the payment of bills. Item number three, payment for travel. Item number four, the human resources report. Item five is a field trip approval for Woodruff Career and Technical Center, specifically the culinary students. Item six is field trip approval, again, for WCTC, but for the hair braiding, barbering, and cosmetology program. Item number seven is a Washington gifted Laredo Taff Field School contract, field trip. Item number eight is the return of the mobile classroom for Charter Oak. Item nine is the Architect of Record. Item ten is a consideration of a motion authorizing the district to apply for Qualified Zone Academy Board, or Bonds. Item eleven is the approval of a settlement agreement related to a lawsuit brought by Kenneth Rutherford. Item number twelve is the approval of a settlement agreement between the Service Employees International Union Fireman and Oilers Local Eight and the Board of Education of Peoria Public Schools concerning a charge of unfair labor practice and related civil case. And item number three is approval of a Northmore Road widening or improvement project, and that is the totality of the consent agenda.
Okay. Item number thirteen, not three, right?
Yes, item thirteen.
Are there any items anyone would like to pull for separate vote or comments? Mr. Walter?
Item nine, Architect of Record.
Anything else? Okay, seeing none. May I have a motion and a second on all items except for number nine?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on those items one through eight, one through thirteen except for nine? Any discussion? Okay, would you please call the roll? Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six eyes, motion carried. May I have a motion and a second on item number nine?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah. President Ross, I have to beg a little forgiveness, I was not here when a lot of the discussion was done in this, so part of this is for edification for myself. But as I understand the motion, there is, and the way it's worded, is that Mr. Willis and the superintendent have selected a single architect to handle the facility stacks. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly, is that's the way they're doing it?
Correct.
I guess my question was, and I wasn't here for the, for the discussion, but I think under the broad view, the way it's written, what I'd like to do is to see, I understand that there were two architects that were very similar in cost. What I would like to see is a distribution done by Mr. Willis and the superintendent between those two firms at their will. I think it's important, I'm a little concerned that the firm we're awarding this to is outside of Peoria County, and we had a Peoria County facility stacks. And I think that the other firm has done a lot of business with this district, and I just think I would like to see some distribution done, and I would leave that distribution up to the superintendent, Mr. Willis, but I would like for consideration for that to be done. That's my point.
Thank you. Other comments? As you said, there was a lot of discussion, and, you know, the rationale was reasonable to everyone, I'm supposing, so it, I mean, what's the pleasure? We have to bring it down to a vote at this point, and no other discussion on this?
Mr. Willis, the follow-up note that kind of, that came along after our discussion about this last time seemed to suggest that there was, even if it was not necessarily naming multiple architects of record, there was some distribution of the work. Can you comment on that a little bit?
Much of the work is in the engineering area. Seventy percent of the $50 million that is planned will be spent on HVAC systems. Will actually have work spread to three, one key group, and they will use two other groups. Those groups are Peoria groups. And so, in terms of the project dollars actually being spent in Peoria, even though the key firm is in East Peoria, but in Peoria Chamber of Commerce, active in Peoria metropolitan area business, they actually will be using firms that have representation in Peoria proper on seventy percent of the work that will be done, which is HVAC. There will be some involvement in other projects, but the HVAC part is the most significant part, and that's where we'll be enlisting probably more help than in any other area, and that assistance will come largely within the Peoria footprint. So, there will be some expenditure of project dollars actually within. There will be some, you know, some sharing and some broadening of that expenditure, and that has been built into the proposal that we submitted for approval.
That may well answer my question. I just, you've addressed it, that was my concern, was that a hundred percent of this was going to be done by somebody out of county and not sharing with people who have been supportive of Peoria Public Schools too. And so, if that is the thing with it, then I'm amenable to number nine going in as is.
Ms. Jackson?
Mrs. Ross, I'd also like to make sure that the other contractors that we might use, subcontractors, that we make sure we get the EEO information from all of those contractors as we move into that, not just that architectural firm, but those contractors that'll be doing work.
Oh, sure. That's one of the standard pieces of information that we'll request when we do any RFP and get any RFP responses. That's, that's already going to be built in.
But I just want to make sure we get a copy of their work, breakdown of their workforce, and a copy of their EEO policy.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. Other questions or concerns? Okay, would you call the roll, please? Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six eyes, motion carried. Deliberation items, agenda, expulsions with the expulsions held in abeyance. Who's going to read tonight? Mr. Shaw or?
President Ross, item fourteen, expulsion with expulsion held in advance. I move that the expulsion with expulsion held in advance listed on the report dated February twenty-first, 2017 be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six eyes, motion carried.
Item fifteen, revocation of expulsion held in advance. I move that the revocation of expulsion held in advance listed on the report dated February twenty-first, 2017 be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Walter?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Six eyes, motion carried. Thank you. Presentations and suggestions by board members. Are there any? Any board reports of board committees?
The Buildings Committee will meet next Thursday, March second, at eight AM in the media room, and primary agenda item is Peoria Stadium.
I'm sorry, what?
Next Thursday, March second.
At eight o'clock?
Any other committee reports?
I was looking for our Policy Committee's next meeting. Do you have? Me? Yep.
Do you have?
One second, one second.
I don't think they've said it yet.
We've laid them out. I just need to.
Wednesday, March fifteenth at nine thirty AM.
Yes.
March what?
March fifteenth.
March fifteenth, nine thirty.
Yes.
Nine thirty AM.
Okay. That's the end.
Any additional, anything else for the good of this business meeting? Seeing none?
President Ross, I move that we adjourn.
So moved.
All right, thank you.
I'm sitting there like, hey, how are you? I'm good, I'm good.
Good.
He's a hustler, don't listen to him. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's something up here.
We didn't expect him to go all around the room.
We're over. Push it on. Thank you. I don't know if they, I don't know if everybody got their, I don't know if everybody got their, I don't know if everybody got their.
Yeah, I did. I just wanted to go. You know, when was the election?
Yes.
The election's coming up.
Michelle.
Yeah, oh, okay, so you're not in the primary.
Oh.
Because it's on.
I'm confused. Your primary is?
Yeah.
Sorry. It's a college, don't, can't be in the primary.
No, no, you're fine because, see, nobody's running against you. If it had been like three people on the way, it would have been a primary, so it's carried down to two. If it had been four, but you're not, you're pretty much a shoe-in.